Everyone make sure they turn their mics on, please. Good evening, we're going to open up the continuance of the public hearing. Karen, do you have the notice in that? That's the, for the continuance?
Uh, I have it in my office.
No, what's the headline, head thing of the app, of the continuance? Okay, continuance of the Fay School architectural field compliance continuance. Sure, you're gonna that?
Uh, yes, I'll be happy to. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Stephen Bookbinder, an attorney with the law firm of Schlesinger and Bookbinder, offices at 1200 Walnut Street, Newton Highlands. I want to thank you very much for convening this meeting tonight. As you know, I was absent last week. I encountered a flat tire on Route 95 on my way up here. Not the most pleasant experience, but I was sorry if I inconvenienced all of you. We've spent the time since we were last here. I've been working with Sandy Matathia, and we've been trying to work out some conditions that we thought we could both live with. And I think we've come to a decision on that. We submitted together jointly a draft decision for you to review. There were a couple of things, and we've also, Town Council's been extraordinarily helpful. He has worked with us and made numerous suggestions, which I just thought were very helpful. One of the matters I wanted to address, and then I'll let Sandy speak, was the issue of the no adult use of the premises. And there are two things I want to say about that. The genesis for this really came from Sandy's clients, who really had concerns about adult activity at the site. And I think to the extent that they've experienced, you know, some nuisance from people using the site, I'm sure that that came from adults rather than from the youth leagues. I mean, the benefit with the youth leagues is that there's adult supervision at all times, and the kids are not running off on their own. I spoke to the folks at Fay when Sandy brought this up, told me how important it was, and I suggested to them, you know, look, first of all, it would be nice if we could work something out so we could all, you know, move ahead and use the fields. And I said, secondly, we started to talk about practically, I said to Alan Clarence, who by the way has had emergency surgery, he's not here tonight, but he's doing fine, he had an emergency appendectomy. I said to Alan, you know, do you really want adults at the site? Because this is a satellite facility, it's not located on the main campus, you don't have eyes and ears there all the time. I don't know that you want to have eyes and ears there all the time. And if you turn it over to an adult league, you know, you're gonna have to suffer the consequences. So with the more we talked about it, Alan said, you know, Steve, I actually think it's better if we just limit the use to kids. So I just wanted to give you that background, obviously, you know, this, the decision is yours, you know, but we've, you know, we're now in agreement with the neighbors that we think it's probably best not to have adult use there. Not only for the neighbors' point of view, but also from our point of view. That was the only issue as we went through this that required some further discussion on our part, but Sandy, I, that's really all I wanted to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I continue on that particular issue?
Yeah, before you do so, I'm gonna have a public record letter written that was sent to us from the Recreation Commission, which concerns that issue.
To Mr. Bartolini, Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, from Doreen Ferguson, Recreation Director, dated December 1st, 2015, regarding SYSA and Fay Turf Field. I have attended several meetings regarding the new turf field proposed by SYSA and Fay School, at which the Recreation Commission and myself have expressed complete support for the project. However, at the last Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, it was proposed that there should be no adult use scheduled on this field. As Director of Recreation, I am opposed to this restriction. As a potential user of the turf field, this restriction defies the mission of the Consumer Commission and Department to provide healthy recreational activity for all ages. I would also like to remind the board that the replacement of the 9/11 Memorial Field is still in question. While we have secured the funding, the extension of a 15-year lease with DCR sits in the State Senate, which will not be in session again until early 2016, pushing the hope for replacement even further out than anticipated. Without the use of an additional turf field in town, we will not be able to field all our youth in adult sports. It is imperative that this project move forward with no restrictions on age, so that we can continue to provide recreational facilities for everyone in our community to use and enjoy.
Thank you. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait and let attorney finish your comments, or?
No, I think I'm done. We, you know, we did receive that letter, and I do understand the sentiment expressed. I just think, unbalanced, this is one of those situations where there's several competing interests. And I think we'd like to try to accommodate our neighbors who we have to live with. And again, for our own best interest, we think we're just, we're better off just having kids there who are supervised, but...
Mr. Chairman, Sandy?
Take that mic close, please.
Sure. Sandy Matathia, Council for the petitioners and the appellants here. On this particular issue, there's been testimony, which is in the record, from the neighbors, that they've experienced a number of disturbing activities on the site, most of which relate to adult use. And just to summarize that very quickly, it's that voices are loud, language, which is adult language, is used, refreshments, which are adult refreshments, or refreshments are used. And generally speaking, we view this as inconsistent with kids or youth use, as well as quiet residential enjoyment of the neighboring properties. And those are the facts on which we think it's appropriate to consider age in relationship to a reasonable use of the property. And when we were here last time in the, in the initial public hearing, it was proposed that that restriction, or that, that issue be addressed in that way. And we went forward with the negotiation, which has been presented to you in written form, with that being a central feature of that agreement between the parties. And we think it's well-placed, that it's sound, and we would hope that you would defer to the parties here in that connection. We recognize the Rec. Commission does have an agenda in terms of maximizing resources available to the community. And we understand from Fay School and Southborough Youth Soccer that there's a good degree of reciprocal use potential associated with the fields here and the, and the artificial turf field that's being proposed. We think that's all upside, and I hope that we can set some limits on things in a way that's well-balanced. And I just want to address very quickly that there is some concern that when you impose an age-related distinction, that there may be some equal protection-related issue there or some discrimination there. But as it turns out, age-based distinctions don't enjoy a level of constitutional protection that makes it difficult to justify. It really is the same as any other condition that you might impose. To the extent that there are facts, which in your view, make it reasonable to impose that condition, it's entirely defensible. And so from an equal protection standpoint, I don't think it's problematic. We understand that the Rec. Commission has a policy. And we understand that with respect to private fields, they're looking to obtain as much use as might be available to the town. And we think that that is happening under this project. And we don't understand that policy to impose requirements on what are otherwise privately proposed projects. But to the extent that there is available space or time, making that available to the town is all to the good. And people hope that that will happen, and in this particular case, I think there's good reason to think that it will. And as I mentioned, it's an important issue, as it turns out, to both parties, and we would hope that you would respect that. So just on that particular issue, that kind of covers me in quick summary. What I wanted to do also is mention to you that we submitted a proposed decision. We, the parties, submitted a proposed decision, which was consistent with, I think, what we were asked or encouraged to do at the first hearing, where we were finding that we were coming together as opposed to going apart on different issues. And the board, I think collectively, asked if we would continue the hearing, go away, and see if we could become of one mind, which as it turns out, we were, we worked hard at, and we accomplished. Town Council subsequently sent you all a list of suggestions and comments, which we in turn took up, not only between Steve and myself, but also with Aldo as well. And I have incorporated all those suggestions and comments in a further revised decision, which I can disseminate to you and show you in red line form what the changes have been. If you'll permit me, I will submit that to you presently.
Before we do that, I'd like the board to make any comments on the age limit. Think first, I would discuss that already.
I've got a quick question. So to the extent that there's an issue about including this as a condition in our, in our official board decision, which is really, you know, on some level, simply confirming that the planning board found the criteria in 170, whatever that provision is, to be applicable. And that's things like emergency access and adequate facilities and things like this. So, I mean, I don't have any problem adding it, but to the extent it's controversial, since it's not a public facility, and this is a private facility in your private parties, is an alternative, a viable alternative, to do this privately and agree? I mean, you don't have to let anyone, even if we don't put a condition here, you don't have to let people use, adults use the fields. You have that, you have that prerogative. And as opposed, if you wanted to take it to another level, you could do a private land use restriction. But is that an alternative to us having to have a controversial restriction in our decision?
Yeah, I'll jump in first, I'll say, you know, it's a great question, and we discussed that. And I actually offered a private restriction to Sandy, but I'll let Sandy speak for herself. I think he's gonna tell you why he feels more comfortable having it in the decision.
Really, two reasons. One is, it's very expedient to do it here. We agree on the substance, we're doing an agreement on the decision in a fashion. And so if we can tuck it in here, we're done.
It's expedient, but it's not politically expedient, it's not, for purposes of comedy, it's not expedient for us.
No, I agree that it's expedient between us. Otherwise, we gotta kind of go into it and find our way down the line.
As a draft, another land use restriction.
Yeah, which, which...
That gets you to the same place.
In substance, it gets you in the same place. I would, I would suggest to you that in form and procedure, it's somewhat different in that, to the extent there's any dispute about that issue, it ends up in sort of a breach of contract mode with enforcement through the courts, as opposed to through the town and the usual zoning enforcement procedure. And so, to our way of thinking, it would be preferable to do that way. I understand that you all have a different perspective on that, and if it puts you in an uncomfortable position, we can otherwise accomplish it and not have it be an issue that ends up, you know, where people are going in different directions because of it. We can, we can find our way on that issue. You're correct in that regard. There is an alternative.
Well, I think what Tom proposed is a very interesting idea, but, and I think that's worth exploring. I mean, until that, I had thought that, I didn't necessarily have a problem with having this as a term of the agreement, but I thought that Town Council's suggestion that, I didn't see the harm in Town Council suggesting that there would be a part of the, you would, you would modify that term to say, to the extent permissible by applicable law.
Yeah. And that's why I address the equal protection point, is because I think factually and legally, it's quite easy to get to the point where you say, it is permissible. But in, to respect a person's different opinion, what I discussed with Town Council is that we would simply acknowledge that if someone feels differently, they need to persuade a court of law that it's not permissible, period. So we recognize that. And in effect, we accommodate it, we address it in the decision.
I guess, to your comments, I don't mind, I mean, whatever is agreed upon having written into our decision, as opposed to having to go outside that and creating more, I guess, legal issues or what have you. It seems like both parties are agreeing on an age restriction. However, I guess there's some thoughts that it'd be best if it wasn't there for, you know, for future use. And I will say that I know, like, St. Mark's allows their facilities for adult use. And even, you know, like, in coordination with the town, like, I coordinate the hockey program at the St. Mark's rank, and, you know, we're very mindful of the fact that it is a school, that we're being allowed to play there. And so, I mean, part of the rules and understanding is, you know, don't do anything that's unacceptable. So I don't see, I mean, and I don't, is there a lot of adult use of soccer fields in town? I'm, that, like, that I'm not even aware of. But, I mean, if there is, I don't see why the same thing couldn't be said, that be mindful of the fact that, you know, you're an invited guest, and it is a school facility, and, you know, treat it as such, so. But I don't want to unravel what you guys are already agreeing on.
No, we appreciate that.
But for what it's worth, if it's, if there's no age restriction, I'm, I'm okay with that, so.
I'm still a big belief that, you know, Fay School is K through 9, is that what it is? It is their property, it's private property, this is what they're trying to do, an age restriction. It's an age-restricted school, kind of makes, it makes sense. Now legally, for the town, should it be done just between them? My lawyer colleagues definitely have a better perspective of that, but from my standpoint, it's private property. They want to do this, I have no problem with it.
I personally disagree with it. It's the fact that the town involv, what is the town involvement in this process, this project, directly with Fay School?
It grants approval for the use of the fields.
Say that again?
It grants approval for the use of the fields.
Who grants approval?
Well, the town does. You, I mean, we have to come to the town in order to get permission for this facility.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the Recreation Department. I know the town is, so I'm talking about Recreation.
My name's Rob Feingold, I'm the Athletic Director at Fay School. And while my primary role is not in charge of rentals of the facilities, I'm obviously aware of, of usage. My understanding is, you know, Fay School would, has usage during their athletic hours. Southborough Youth Soccer has priority in usage during their hours. And then any unused time would be made available to the town to potentially utilize, similar to the current fields that we have on Parkerville Road and at the Marlboro Athletic Campus. So my understanding is that, that usage would be shared with the town, and certainly, you know, but, but Fay School during their hours, Southborough Youth Soccer during their hours, and then any overflow would be used.
Do you have adult programs at the main campus?
To my knowledge, and again, I'm not responsible for rentals. We have one adult rental in all of our fields, and one soccer, one adult rental, period. And that's on one of the existing grass fields at the Marlboro Campus. To the best of my knowledge, again, that is not my primary role, but that's my understanding.
So that's what I wanted to ask, is?
Yes.
So does, does the school, is the school gonna rent the fields, or is it just made available to the town to use?
My understanding is, Southborough Youth Soccer, again, Fay School, Southborough Youth Soccer, town usage, and then any overflow, again, would be, would be rented to any of our existing renters, similar to the grass fields, and, yeah.
And Southborough Youth Soccer's not the town, right?
Right, but I know, I know there's like town, I said, I'm a little ignorant, because I know there's like a, I know there's different town programs for adults, and I don't, I don't even know, do they, does that get rented out, does that?
Excuse me, so you need to use the mic, if you can grab the other one if you'd like.
My questioning, the reason it's before us is because you're, the renting it out to the different programs, that's what we have. I mean, our last agenda was this Dover Amendment, where they're allowed to do anything for an educational use, and they can do whatever they want, and I'm trying to understand the difference.
Yeah, you want to take a stab at it?
Yeah, please.
So Fay School is a school, they are protected by the Dover Amendment. So we can enact a regulation that would prohibit them from carrying out their educational mission, and definitely the youth soccer fields are a part of that mission. So I think the Dover Amendment comes into play with respect to their ability to use those fields for, for Fay, to use the fields that we're talking about for soccer. Now, there is some level, as we talked about last time, some level of regulation that, that a town should allow to do on bulk dimension setbacks and things like that, on how, how intensive they can, they can use it. So that's why I think that they had to get site plan approval for the fields to begin with, and had to get modification with site plan approval. And I think the Fay basically kind of waived the Dover Amendment to say, we're gonna voluntarily submit to this, whether we need to or not. It might be arguable whether they, they had to come here before us or not, but they're here before us. And now in terms of use, we're not imposing a use on them, they're imposing a use on themselves. So they're just asking us to codify, for lack of a better term, that use restriction into our decision, so that it's part of the public record for time in Memorial. And so one of the issues that I raise is, does it really need to be? Because they can accomplish the same thing through a private land use restriction without, without us having to put it into our decision and potentially upsetting our recreational director.
The issue with that is the fact that it's the regulations that were provided by the planning board on the approval of it. And that's the appeal that's being done in front of us by the abudders. They're appealing the decision of the planning board, that's what is presently in front of us. Sir, can you finish what you were gonna say, please?
Didn't have much more to say other than, than we do rent to town lacrosse and other, you know, various other youth sports. But, but as far as adults, my, to my knowledge, there is only one.
This field could be used for lacrosse also, then, is it, is it multi-use?
To my, to my knowledge, yeah, there was gonna be multi-use. So, primary soccer, 11 v 11 lines, smaller 8 v 8 lines going across, and also lacrosse lines, was what was discussed. But again, that's, that's kind of, that was not finalized in my, in my understanding.
And none of our fields for soccer, softball, or anything have any age limit legalizations on them. And the other thing is something the town needs, I think, needs to be thought about, is the fact that if it does go in that direction, it's very possible that the town could get sued, or Fay School could get sued to the fact of a context of interest on age-limited people that might want to use these fields.
But we could also get sued if, if adults are there drinking alcohol and we allowed...
Well, I don't think we would, I mean, we're not condoning drinking and alcohol use, we're just...
But that was, that was brought up by the, the residents, is why they don't want it to happen.
But I mean, you're not allowed to drink alcohol.
The thing is, it is allowed in all the fields.
Not allowed to have an open container in, I don't think.
No, I, I get it, but Fay School owns this property, we can't forget that. It's not town property.
But it's, well, excuse me, Doreen, would you like to make a...
I, I just have a question.
Hold that mic down, please.
Too short. So my concern is, if the board, if the board makes a decision on this piece, I think it's very short-minded. I really think, you really need to think long-term of this property, number one. Number two, isn't the policy that Fay is going to have? I'm sorry, I, I've not seen any of the paperwork on this at all. Isn't there a policy in place for this facility that if there is any disruptive or, you know, unruly things happening, that you can pull permits from people, and they can no longer use the facility? Isn't that what you would use the policy for?
I mean, that's my understanding, when we use the facilities at St. Mark's, that if, and again, I'm like policing that, if there's something that's not appropriate, you know, that I gotta stop it, and we could have the privilege taken away from us, so to say.
That's right, that's right.
One thing to keep in mind, if I could just add one thing, is that if we don't put it into our decision, it doesn't mean that they're prohibited still from preventing adult leagues from using, using, because again, it's their field, so they can do it privately. It's just a matter of whether, it's almost like a formality, I'm using the wrong terminology. It's a, it's, if we put it in, it'll basically just reflect what they're planning to do anyway. So if we don't do anything, they will likely put a, you know, impose those restrictions between themselves anyway. So it's unlikely that the adults are gonna be able to use it, regardless of what we do. So it's unlikely that the adults are going to be able to use it regardless of what we do.
I'd like to have town council explain that because I don't understand what, what's been said just now. If we don't do it, it doesn't matter. If we do, it matters. It doesn't, if that's the case, why is it even presented in front of us? Doesn't make sense.
I think the explanation that was given by Tom Biscule was accurate and completely on point. I think what the parties are looking for is, I think Tom indicated it as a codification of their position, giving it a little more technical authority and punch. I look at it as like a ratification by the ZBA that you accept that as a condition between the parties. Ultimately, there is no culpability for the town because they control the field. So there's no liability issue that I see. And they're going to continue to deal with it between themselves by the arrangement and agreement, neighbors and Fay School. So that's why I think that it could go, you can decide either way. The drafts that were sent to me and the issue that was addressed was whether or not a, a board could include that. We are in a site plan review mode and this is, but it is comprehensive in the, in the way the bylaw is, is created. So you do have that purview, that, that authority to, to consider that. So I don't have an issue either way. I think that we, the councils, the three of us, discussed at length any constitutional issues. And I don't see them as, as anything pertaining to what could come back on the board or the town. So you're in full discretion to decide whether or not you believe, as, as Tom's saying, is, you know, this is something that they can enforce on their own and it should be left that way. Or just to give it further ratification by the town that you can add as a condition.
Andrew?
Jeff.
A minute, Doreen. Andrew.
Have she had a chance to speak yet or?
Yes.
No, go ahead.
I just had a question. What was, what was the age range? Is, is it eighteen?
Yeah, we, we've, we've said eighteen or graduation from high school, recognizing there are, you know, kids in high school might be eighteen and a half or nineteen.
We got kids from college that come back that sometimes want to do some things that haven't hit twenty-one yet.
Okay, but the issue, but it's a private field though.
Well, actually, hearing the description from council, I, I just don't see our place here.
Say that again, please.
I, I don't see the zoning boards a place here to, to impose anything. It's a private field. It's, it's, it's theirs. You can do what you want. You tell me what to do in my backyard. I'm not going to let you. I don't, I don't see our place here.
I'm going to have town council make a comment.
A quick follow-up. You've got to look at it in the context of an appeal of site plan approval. Appears that the planning board met the criteria under the, under the bylaw. But in further settlement, under, it's a, it's a proper appeal. In, in further settlement, this has been proposed to you. It's completely up to you, but if you choose to add the condition, it's defensible and it's within your legal authority. If you choose to leave it to the private parties, that's another option.
The other issue, which I could be wrong and council can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but due to the fact that they're talking about it being a private field run by Fay School, rented out to individuals, and you are saying about renting it out to individuals, right, sir?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned about renting the field out to individuals, different groups?
Sure, yes, with, with, with the proposed age restriction.
So if that happens, they're doing it in a commercial, in a residential property and it's a commercial use. So I think that creates a whole different issue to be thought about. Because originally back ten years ago, this project came in front of the town by a developer to put a soccer field and everything on it. And it was denied due to the fact that it was a commercial use by this board.
Right.
So I don't know where that regulation goes and how that works.
If, if, if I might, on that, on that point, the, it was always intended, the fields are primarily for the school. It was always intended as such. When we came in to do the original permitting, I think it was two thousand seven or two thousand eight, we were asked by the planning board, would you be willing to make, you know, time available that you're not using to the town? And we said, sure. I think at that point, no one was thinking exactly in terms of age limits or who might be using it. In terms of the commercial nature, Southborough Use Soccer does pay a fee, and I wish I knew the numbers. Unfortunately, they're not here tonight, but it's a relatively nominal fee. The school doesn't make money on this. The fees that's paid probably doesn't even support the upkeep and maintenance of the field, but it's really intended to be a community use thing. And I think it's fair to say that school is happy to have other community youth groups participate. And frankly, if we didn't have the issue with the neighbors, we might not even be having this conversation. But because the neighbors did raise the issue and because we want to be sensitive to that and in further thought, we think there's maybe some merit to what the neighbors are saying. That's why we felt this was the best way to go forward. Let the school complete its mission, make the fields available to the town, you know, with the age restriction, and let the neighbors feel that their rights are not being infringed upon. So.
All right. And then any other, as far as that takes care of the age limit issue presently, and we'll let you go forward with your presentation.
I just have a revised draft decision, which includes everybody's comments on the prior draft that was submitted. And one of the things that hasn't been mentioned that I'll just say here is that there was some discussion among lawyers that the concept of a waiver was something that this board didn't have authority or jurisdiction to deal with outside of subdivision and planning board. And so we have simply omitted any reference to waiver here. That's entirely gone. Everything else is as we've talked about. And I have a, a clean form of decision and then a red line showing all the changes from the last draft that was submitted to you. And I'd like to give you ten copies of, of both, if that would be acceptable.
Well, I'd like you to read it into the public record first.
All right, read the decision.
The whatever, yeah, the presentation, yes.
Well, it's, it's all been submitted in writing.
Yeah, but it needs to be put into a public, read into the public record. Anything we have like that, we make it read into the public record.
If you'd like, if you'd like to take the time. It's six, it's almost six pages, a little over six pages.
Sandy, can I ask you a quick question before I start reading about that waiver? Because I, I had, did, when I went through this and I saw all those comments, and I agree with the basic proposition that we, we shouldn't be asked to waive a, a, a planning board subdivision regulation. But I still thought the substance of that clause was, was good and relevant. You know, I, you know, I think it's still a good idea to have a concept in here that, that the facilities, the temporary, the portable facilities that are proposed here.
Mm-hmm.
Satisfy the, the bylaw criteria that we're, that we're under. Without, I mean, we can reconstitute it as, as something other than a waiver. Maybe we just make it a finding that we, we find that they're. Yeah, I think it's important to know because it has been controversial as to whether the porta, porta potty facilities satisfy the bylaw criteria for, for utility, you know, for, for.
The, the way this reads right now.
Yeah.
Is that there's a general finding that the criteria have been satisfied, both the review and decision criteria. The decision criteria are, are defined term under the site plan review.
Right, but on that, since that issue has been raised.
And, second, that's number one. Number two is that the porta potty provision is explicit in that it's required. But it doesn't, what it doesn't do, as you were suggesting, is say that the porta potties satisfy a particular subdivision requirement. We just steered clear of that issue.
I was going to say satisfy the requirements of, I keep forgetting the, of one seventy-four dash ten D. You know what I mean? So that we are basically making a finding that, that what they've proposed.
We have a blanket finding.
But this has been raised as a controversial issue. I wouldn't mind having it be specifically called out.
We can, we can reiterate that. I think where I would, where I would go there is, here's a condition that's number nine. Says sanitary disposal services will be provided by the use of porta potties. And it goes on to say how many they're going to be and where they're going to be and that they're going to be.
Maybe we can do that there, that, that we find that they're, you know, that's a, okay.
You could do that again, a second time. Do you want me to read?
I'm going to question the board. Did the board want to read it in a public record or not?
I don't find it necessary.
It's got to be done individually. If we're going to approve it, we have to individually, when we close the public hearing, discuss it. We'll have to do it ourselves that way.
We can review it if he's, he's, he is talking.
Excuse me.
Tell, tell council whether we need to read it.
You, you honestly do not need to read it or put attorney Medaia through that dissertation. I think that you, you can take what you have as submitted, and I reviewed the further revised draft that has been created after my recommendations, and it appears to be consistent and acceptable to me. However, you're the final deciders on that. So that you would take what they give you, add in language that you want, recreate it with your own personnel into a final proposed decision. I think that would be the better way to do it.
So we do that when we go to do the decision?
Yeah, in other words, we can take this under consideration. We can craft a decision however we see fit.
Well, when we get done, before we, we vote for the decision, then we'll have to go over the issues.
Right.
All right. So then if that's the case, they don't have to read it in the public record. We'll do it publicly ourselves. Now, this is a new submittal?
It's revised submittal.
New.
Yeah. Just different.
It's the same but different.
This supposed to have been done, done ten days prior to the meeting.
We got the comments less than a week ago. And we've been in discussion and this reflects our discussion.
I, I got to say, I find this very, very helpful to explain because what it took is, it took all, all those comments paragraph by paragraph and the original proposed agreement and.
Synthesize.
Synthesize. And so I tried to do that myself and it becomes a lot of work to do that. So this saves us a lot of work.
Which?
There's a, there, Aldo has a lot of suggestions which are stylistic or, I don't want to say minor, but they're just a pro forma. So this does the work for us. So we don't have to go through a lot.
Mr. Cipriano, have you reviewed this also? Have you received this?
I have at length and it is in a final, it is a clear final draft that incorporates most of my comments and an explanation as to further modification. And I have no further questions and no further.
So you've read this?
I have.
Okay.
Yes.
What do you want to do? You want to just do a patient honor? Do you want to take it under advisement on, on this, on this new draft? Because this is their proposed form of decision with all those comments in it. And so the question is, we've got to decide whether we want to adopt it or whether we all, you know, have comments to, to, do you want to do it now or do you want to take it under advisement offline?
Well, what would the board like to do?
Tom, who, who generated this?
Excuse me, Tom, will you please use that mic?
That's the most recent one.
This is the most recent.
The red, the updated red line version.
Yeah, so.
Regardless, this was.
So the two lawyers working together put together the original, the original draft. And then Aldo gave us a set of comments in a separate document saying, I, I commented this clause and this clause and this clause. Then Aldo and the two attorneys have worked together to essentially incorporate all those comments into an integrated revision of this. And so that's what's before us now.
Why is it on our letterhead from us?
Well, it's just draft.
It's a proposed decision.
It's a proposed decision that we would, that we would adopt.
If it were perfect, you could just sign it, but that doesn't mean that you won't make revisions.
Well, we're supposed to sign a decision that we do.
Correct.
Not a decision done by somebody else.
Yeah, but attorneys.
That's not the reason of, of the represent, the way a zoning board is run or done.
Well, that's why I was confused. Why does it say town of Southborough?
No, but attorneys do draft decisions for us to.
Say that again?
Attorneys do draft decisions for us to.
They give us proposed drafts of.
Proposed drafts, yes. It's not uncommon.
It is a.
Yeah, it is uncommon. The only time we do that is after a public hearing's been closed and we've done it and we go forward and do it.
That's true.
This was done prior to us doing it.
True.
And it wasn't a request of the board to have it done that way.
To back up again, sort of stealing what I think you ask oftentimes, the abutters, are there any issues here with what's being said?
Say that again?
With the abutters of the property, which to me are the most important.
Well, he represents the, the abutters.
You're representing.
We haven't got to that point yet. We haven't finished our conversation with them. Then we'll ask the abutters before we.
All right.
Go any further. It's just we haven't got that point yet.
All right.
Mr. Counsel?
Well, the, the only thing administratively I'm thinking is that the, the idea of taking it under advisement, of course, is something you can do very easily. I think you're meeting tomorrow night. Oh, please, Tom, no.
Correct.
Yeah, but we have no.
Correct, however?
Excuse me. Tomorrow night's a, a Pac Central hearing and there's only three members of the board going to be there. And it's less than twenty-four hours, so we can't technically put it on an agenda.
Okay, so, well, it's a continuation of what's happening tonight, but you can, it's whatever you decide. It's just to, to, if you, if you're comfortable making the decision tonight, that's fine. If you're taking it under advisement, you're going to act on it at a later time, I presume.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to figure out whether we should take this back and all absorb it, you know, and then comment on it. I mean, we have a substantive issue as about, about whether we're going to include the use restriction in, in here or not. I don't know whether we decide that tonight. And then, you know, when I went through this with a fine tooth comb with your comments and side by side and, you know, went through some painstaking time. So I don't know whether, you know, to what extent this incorporates your comments and I have some comments. So I don't know how you want to proceed, you know, whether you want to continue it so that we can all digest this.
That's fine.
Before the next meeting or whether you want to try to go through the pain of doing it now.
I think that's the way it should be done.
Yeah, I kind of think so too.
Okay, we have to write the decision and, and approve what's written or they approve what they wrote. But we have to go through it and do it dirt.
Don't we normally do that after we close?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to end up in the same spot, but there's just some nuances and.
We don't need to feel it till the spring, so it's, it's fine.
We don't need to continue, I mean, we do that after we close it anyways.
We can close a public hearing and then, and then all comment on the form of the decision like we, like any other decision.
Like any decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing is, this here is, is a, going to be a major conversation because it's a very large issues to go over. So if we can do it that way, there's no problem with that at all.
Okay.
I just want to chime in. I, I'm comfortable making the decision tonight because I, I accept that in terms of whether this, this new red line version, town council has reviewed it and is satisfied that it reflects town council's comments and the proposed terms by the parties. The one really substantive issue that we discussed was the age restriction. And I, I don't know what more would be added by having another hearing on that. And if we did that, then that would then be the fourth hearing we would have on this because we did have, we had one hearing, then we had another scheduled, which was postponed. And this is the third. And then there would be, it would be a fourth hearing. So I don't know how much more value is going to be added to continuing it. It really is just the, the, the substance of it. And we could, we could decide it now and then, you know, make revisions to the form of the decision later. Do you agree?
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. I mean, I, you know, in other words, decide it in print and concept, in other words hypothetically approve the, you know, sustain the planning board's decision, adopt their conditions and then worry about the drafting of the decision.
I think we're.
The written decision afterwards.
I mean, I think we're pretty far along already.
What do you think, Lee? I mean, I had another couple of kind of quasi-substantive comments to that. Maybe we can just talk about any of the comments we have before we close a public hearing.
I, I think that makes sense.
Before we close a public hearing so that, you know.
Any comment has to be done prior to closing the public hearing.
Right.
So if you want to go forward, Tom, go ahead.
So I, I guess I had two comments, one of which we already talked about with that waiver. Instead of taking it off, I'd rather keep it as a finding that we, we find the porta potties to be sufficient for, for purposes of one seventy-four dash ten D. And then my other substantive comment was. Oh, yeah, we, this concept that.
Oh, yeah, we, this concept that, in paragraph nine on page five, that, that, you know, there's a provision for porta potties and the number of porta potties there would have to be and where they'd be located. But one of the clauses, they had this, they had a qualifier, which is that these porta potties requirements would be in place until such time as permanent restroom facilities were established on the site. Aldo wanted to strike that, and I, I guess my comment on that was that I think the reason it was being stricken was to not create a suggestion that you're, that they were obligated to create permanent restroom facilities. But I think that the, the concept may still be good that if in the future they do decide on their own to put in a permanent facility, then these porta potty requirements, I guess, would, would go away.
That's a good point, yeah.
So that was another comment on paragraph nine. And that's really the only other substantive comment I had. So I don't know whether anyone else had any substantive comments we could talk about with these guys before they close.
Andrew, any other comments?
I just had a question about Tom's comments. So on the red line version that I'm looking at.
That's the thing I haven't had a chance to digest it.
Okay, that's this.
Yep.
So on, on condition nine, page five, how would that, how would what you're proposing translate to what's written here? I know you wanted, you wanted to have a finding here that this meets the provisions of the...
Yeah, this is now a slightly separate concept. So the concept is that, that they took out this concept of what happens once permanent restroom facilities are put in. And I think that the agreement is, we don't want to impose an obligation on them to put in permanent facilities, which is, I think the reason that was struck. But if they choose to do so voluntarily in the future, then these porta potty requirements, temporary facilities become superseded.
Well, why can't you just say, "Or similar permanent facilities be..."
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, I think we can probably reconstitute or redraft it in a way that, that captures that comment without, without obligating, without obligating them to put in the permanent facilities.
Right. Or until such time similar permanent facilities are provided.
Or we keep it in, say voluntarily put in or something like that.
Voluntarily.
Or if any time in the future...
Right.
...the owner elects to construct permanent facilities, then these, you know, these temporary facility requirements will, will no longer apply, or something towards that effect. I mean, we can word some of it later, but that's the concept I was going for.
No, it's correct. I agree.
So that was my only other substantive comment.
Any other questions, comments?
I have no, no comments.
Any comments by the attorneys?
No.
Any comments by the residents? Any further discussion then? If not, we'll make a recommendation to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Recommendation to close the public hearing, please.
I recommend we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, how do you want to do the discussion on this now? I mean, we have to discuss this whole thing. So how do we want to...
I think the big issue maybe, maybe we start with the use restriction because that's something that we're going to...
Say that again?
I think we're just, at some point, we're going to have to resolve the issue of whether we include the use restriction or not, that they want us to include.
The age.
I'm sorry, the, the age restriction. I'm sorry.
That's something we discuss.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's probably something we need to discuss and try to resolve.
Right. It's one of the major issues. And is that basically the only issue the board is considering?
Well, then the two issues I just raised, which, you know, I'd like to make to, to the modification of the, of the conditions, but that's my only other...
Right.
...comments.
I'm with Tom on...
What?
I'm with Tom on those, those issues.
Well, then if we want, you want to discuss the issue on the age limit?
Sure.
Go ahead.
You want to do it, do it.
Okay. You know, at the end of the day, you know, as my comments were before, they could do this privately. They're asking us to do this. I think we could go either way on this. I don't personally feel strongly one way or the other on it. I guess by default, I'm inclined to accommodate the two parties if they're asking us to include it, if there's no, no other consequence other than this, this assists them in reaching the resolution that they've reached. So I guess I would be in favor of including it to accommodate the parties.
I am too, and just my perspective on it is, I mean, you could, you have the concern that, well, there should be more adult use on it, but I don't think we have the, the right to impose that a condition because it's private property. And, and the other concern would be, okay, what if someone in town who was older than 18 wanted to use it? Would they have any type of a claim against the town because they would be prohibited from using it because of this term? And I think, you know, the council for all the parties have looked at that, and I, I agree, that seems like a pretty weak claim. So that's, that's my thinking and why I also am inclined to, here's the owner of the property saying, "We're okay with this," and the abutter that was, had concerns about this particular use saying, "We want this use restricted." And I, I think it can be properly fit within the appeal of the site plan review. So that's how I'm inclined to vote.
I, I would prefer not to see any age restriction in it, just so the town can have it for any future use, you know, any of the rec department programs and the such. So I'd rather keep it private between the two parties, and they seem to, you know, whatever they agree on and how they're going to use it right now would be fine with me. So I would prefer not to have anything that we write in there to, you know, restrict it for any future town use, but...
I guess I'm a little in between. It's, I'm kind of like Tom. I, I'm not sold either way necessarily. The fields are being subsidized by the town and the use, and, you know, collecting those funds kind of brings it, in my mind, to, to our forefront. So then to age restricted is kind of, I get it. I think the neighbors kind of are working with the town, and the town subsequently agreed that for themselves probably makes sense from a liability standpoint to limit it. I get that, but... I don't know. I'm still, I'm still on the fence on that one.
To further my thing, I don't mind if it's time restricted. So, I mean, I, I think most of the, I'm assuming most of the concern might, you know, happen during the later hours perhaps. So if it's time restricted, I don't, I don't mind that as much. And I don't know if we ever got into that, that is this a, you know, is this a late night facility or a daylight facility? I...
Well, the, the issue...
I think there was some conversation in the first meeting.
I think there's stipulated, there's already a condition in there, it's daylight hours only.
It's daylight, correct, from the first meeting we had? So, you know, that being said, I'm...
Even more inclined.
I'm more inclined to not have it age restricted because it's, it's, it's time restricted.
Right. And the issue of what is said is the fact that this is no discussion with the town residents, it's to do with the abutters only.
Right.
The other issue I think that we should do, because it is an issue with the whole town of using this field, if we're not going to, I think it should just be taken off, just let it go. Face School can do what they want with their property. They own it. The town council has stated before and what Tom had said, and just with, with, if that's the way the board wants to do it, is withdraw it and just take it off the application completely. And we have no say because if we say that we want the hours to be stricken and given to the adults, we were told that they can take and change that themselves and not do it. So if we just remove it and take it off of the decision, we have no problems or we have no chances of being accused of doing it or any, at any sort. It has nothing to do with us.
With it, with that said, I don't want to get in the way of a good thing happening because of worrying about stuff.
Say that again?
I don't want us to get in the way of a good thing happening. I mean, the fields would be great. Having fields and are good, they're good for towns. You know, so...
So you can, in, in a condition of approving the age, eliminate and not having the age restriction?
I just don't want to get in the way of it. So it, I get it. I'm, I'm, honestly, this is a tough one. I, I don't know.
Well, if we withdraw it, we're not in the way of it all. It's going to be done by the owners of the field. They can do whatever they want.
On the age matter.
On the age matter, or either that or we take and agree and we, we approve that they have no age limit. It'll go that way. But if it's going to go the other direction, we're giving them the authority to do what they want to do on it, and we have no say on it at all.
I think I agree. I agree with that.
The, the issue, though, about if you were to remove that term, that's kind of, it was kind of an important part of the agreement that, that, that the two parties reached before they came here.
And what do you mean?
Okay, so if you take it out, then, I mean, what, what?
Yeah, I mean, it was part of a holistic agreement that was reached between the abutters and, and the face school as to what would be a set of conditions that would be palatable to the neighbors that were allowed this, this field to go forward and get approved and to support this, this approval going forward and getting these fields approved. And so it's, you know, I think what they're saying is this is one of the core terms is that the neighbors would be comfortable with this if there was a use restriction. It still applies. I think they can do it if we keep it out. I think they can and they probably will put the use restriction on anyway. So, you know, for that reason, I think they can still accomplish their means. But, so I think that's why, as Aldo said, if we include in our decision or not, it's not going to change things, but it will help facilitate their resolution of this if we, if we include it. But, you know, it creates some issues for us, too, because, one, it's arguably way beyond the scope of what we're supposed to be approving here on, on the site plan approval, and two, you know, we're getting some pushback from our recreation department and...
Well, I, I'm not so clear on why it's really that far beyond what we need, what we're doing in, in review of site plan review. I mean, just like you could have, you know, there's a restriction about no nighttime use. This is a restriction on, kind of, I think, like the intensity of the use. So I'm, I'm not sure I entirely agree with what you're saying there.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, if you look at, in other words, there's a precedent for this already having been done. If you look at the criteria of 176-10, you know, use restrictions don't come into it at all. So, you know, in terms of strictly applying the criteria, again, there are things like emergency access and adequate facilities and very objective subdivision approval type objective criteria as opposed to squishy site plan, you know, I mean, special permit approval. But, but, you know, it's true. There's a precedent for the planning board imposing those type of, those type of operational restrictions on, on the use.
All right, so what, for the four members of the board, what is the way they want to handle the age limit then? How does it want to be handled?
I mean, as I stated, I would prefer just not to have an age limit come into play.
I, I'm, not necessarily agreeing with that, but just, I, I don't believe it's our involvement. If we're not necessary, less government is better.
Again, I don't feel that strongly. So the rest of the board wants to keep it out, I would, I would support that.
Okay, I guess that may leave me the lone person that would like to keep it in.
What?
I guess that leaves me the lone person that would like to keep it in, and I just think it kind of respects the process that's coming.
I'm in favor of, of not having the age limit, as Paul stated. I don't think it's the right thing to do to the town. I really don't.
We, we can live with it.
Excuse me, sir, we can't talk to the public or the attorney because we've closed the hearing. I'm sorry. So what does the board want to do on that condition? That's what I, I mean.
Yeah, it seems like there's a consensus to omit it.
Omit it.
Say that again?
I think, it seems like there's a consensus to omit it, to, to leave it out.
Four, four.
There, what? There's a consensus?
Yes.
Consensus unanimous. We'll explain that afterwards.
Yeah, I'm learning. Sorry.
Excuse me, Jeff, you're agreeable not to, to approve the age limit restriction?
Correct.
Paul, you're not?
Correct.
Okay. Andrew?
Consensus with the wrong word, right?
I forget which way you phrase it. Are you, are you for the age restriction or against the age restriction? I'm for the age restriction. I'm okay with it.
I'm against the age restriction.
I'm against it, too.
I'm against it.
All right, so the three of us against it, two of you's in?
I'll go with you guys on that because I don't feel that strongly about it.
What?
I'll go with you guys on that because I don't feel that strongly about it, and I think that, I think the, the parties are content with it as well.
Right.
So you're against it.
So it's agreeable...
I'm with the three of you. Of taking it out and not having a use restriction in there, I mean, a age restriction in here. Taking out paragraph five.
All right, and not having an age restriction. Okay. So, all right, so that's that one odd issue. Tom, you have your other two?
Yeah, you want me to just kind of phrase it?
Yeah.
Sorry, I got a lot of stuff. So, on... The, their proposed deletion of the waiver clause on page four of their markup. So just to restate my comments on that, I'm agreeing with taking out as a waiver, the concept is that they're waiving the requirement of permanent sanitary facilities. And the concept is that, you know, to the extent they're required, we're waiving that, and Aldo says that's something we shouldn't be doing. But I, my point is, I think we should still keep the concept because it has been an issue about whether permanent facilities are required under our, under our bylaws, that I think we should make at least an affirmative finding, forget about a waiver, but just a finding that we find that the proposed temporary facilities that they're proposing are sufficient to satisfy the requirements of section 1474-10D.
I, I agree with that. I'm okay with that. Paul?
Section what?
Sorry, section 174-10D, which are the criteria that apply to the site plan approval. One of the criteria is that we have to find that...
This is in reference, like, to, to point number nine?
Basically, what it's saying is the fact that...
Different.
We're saying that the, the way it is presently set up, and that if the owner decides to put a facility in, then they can remove them.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a separate point.
That's the basis.
That's the next point.
I guess somewhat to what Jeff said a little bit earlier, I, I think less is more sometimes, or...
What?
Less, we don't, we don't need to say too mu, I mean, as long as there's adequate facilities being provided, I think that's...
No, but that's what Tom was saying, that this is a finding that what they're proposing is adequate.
Right. So I don't think we need to get much more wordy than that.
Yeah, I'm not going to speak for Paul, but I agree.
Well, the thing that Tom has is he's clarifying the fact that what's presently going to be done is our right, but...
But.
If they go put a facility in, we're giving them the right to remove the other facility. Simple, and that's...
And I think that was going to be Tom's next point.
Right, and I'm just saying, just leave it as adequate facilities are being provided.
The only reason I think it's useful to have it and not explicitly is because one of the issues that has been raised is whether those porta potties are, are adequate for purposes of our, of our bylaws. And so because it's been raised, that was our conversation earlier with, with Attorney Mathias, is that, you know, since it's been raised as an issue, I think it's, 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 it's good practice for us to include a finding specifically that we think that the, the proposed porta potties are, are adequate for purposes of our, of our bylaws, so that, essentially so it can't be challenged.
God, I hate to say this, but is this like something for us to decide, or is it a board of health thing, then?
No, it's a finding that they've come to us to decide. This is one of the challenges of, as to whether the planning board's approval of this was correct under the criteria that we're giving us. And one of the criteria is, are there adequate facilities?
Okay, in that light, I, okay, I get it now.
Since it was challenged on that basis, I think we should make a specific finding.
Okay.
All right, so we agree?
I'm fine.
All right, everybody agrees on that one. One more, Jeff.
And then my, my last point on nine, which is kind of a cousin of what we just talked about, which is that in, in paragraph nine that we, you were just looking at, prescribes what temporary porta potties Face School would have to impose. There's no controversy there. The issue is that they wanted to strike the concept that, that this would only be in effect until such time as permanent restroom facilities are established. And I think the concept there is good. In other words, once, if Face School decides to put in permanent facilities, then the requirement of the temporary facilities, I think, goes away.
As long as it's similar.
As long as it...
Adequate.
Yeah.
Similar and adequate.
Adequate. So that's why I thought adding back the concept of, you know, at some point when permanent facilities are put in, then these, these requirements... then these, this, these requirements on number nine would be essentially superseded by...
So, we don't have porta-potties next to permanent facilities.
Yeah, that's the concept, yeah.
I understand what you're saying on the, on one side of that, but the other issue is on it, as far as I'm concerned, is the fact that by that statement being there, it's basically saying that, in the long run, they're gonna have to put a permanent facility in.
No, we can make, make clear that they don't have to.
We need to make that clear, that that's not, that's not have to be done.
And we could wordsmith that.
And what you, wording the rest of it is good, is, is right, but to leave it the way it's written, it basically says, technically, that it could be permanently, that if somebody wanted to appeal or do anything, that they could say, well, that's...
However, should Fay School, upon their choosing...
That's their own responsibility.
Right.
So, we're just clarifying, you agree on that, on the way to word that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah, we could wordsmith it, but that's a concept. If they elected their own choosing to do it...
That's different.
Then, these temporary, and they do it, then these temporary facility requirement would go out.
Provided the permanent facilities are equivalent or greater than the temporary facilities.
Well, the thing we can make it very simple...
You can't put in one bathroom and get rid of four porta-potties.
We could also...
That they're adequate, we could use adequate, because that's the bylaw criteria.
We can word it on the decision, that the fact that if, if they do build a permanent facility, it has to be in a certain adequate thing, and put that into the decision. So, if they do build it, it's gotta be done a certain way, they can't just build one or two bathrooms, they gotta build...
And they're adequate for purposes of the bylaws.
Now, they say here, I, I want, if I remember right, on, on the, the planning board issue, that there will be four facilities or something on the site, total.
Well, so then, name it as four, then, if it goes permanent.
But I think we can make the decision...
I mean, adequate is a subjective term.
Yeah, I mean, once they put it in, we can make the decision whether it's, whether what they put in is adequate or not.
Well, that's why I was saying, equivalent or greater.
Basically, what's been said and done in the thing is, is agreed that it has been adequate, and it's been agreed upon by everybody presently, so we use that, and then just, and if they want to go bigger than that, that's great, they can do that.
Equivalent or greater.
Equivalent or greater.
The way we, you agree the way to word it that way, Tom?
Yeah, uh, yeah, the only problem is, I don't want to get them in trouble, because there's gonna be four porta-potties in five different locations, so I guess I don't want to...
How could you have four in five locations?
What?
How do you have four porta-potties in five locations?
It's a parallel dimension.
Yeah, I was about to say.
So, if they're, you know, four or five different locations, we don't want to create a suggestion, if they choose a permanent facility, they have to put in five permanent facilities. I don't think we're saying that, but, you know...
Oh, I get what you're saying, so if you have permanent in one location, maybe you need a little bit more, you need six.
You know, maybe they have some big, you know, permanent facility that has twenty stalls, we, I think we'd all agree that's adequate, even though they're not in five different locations. But if, you're right, if they only put in one stall, and they had six different porta-potties, that wouldn't be adequate.
Right.
But I think we can leave it flexible, so the adequacy, wherever they put it, has to be adequate according to the bylaws.
We also could put it under the condition that if that happens, that they have to go in front of the planning board and get approved for it, and make the planning board responsible.
Yeah, the planning board's gonna have to make the adequacy decision when they go to the planning board.
We can do it that way.
But if a permanent facility is going in, it is gonna be a planning board.
Yeah, and they can, and planning board is gonna have to approve that, on the site plan approval, the same criteria. The planning board's the first, you know, party that makes it.
It's their problem.
Leave it to them to figure out.
Agreed.
Well, the thing is, because it's only, they add a building on the site, and they're not changing any, no parking or anything like that, it's questionable whether it would even have to go there. But if we put it in our decision, they have to go there, then that controls it, and I think that would be something to think about.
That it goes where?
The thing is, that we put, that if they go to do that facility, that it has to go to the planning board, and just do it that way, because technically, they're just gonna put a bathroom thing on the site, and they're not gonna change driveways, parking lots, and think, most likely, the building inspector will just approve it, it won't have to. But if we put it in our decision, then they'll go there, and that'll continue that, the way it's gonna be, and where it's gonna be located, everything, and that'll also give the neighbors an opportunity of where it's gonna be and where it's gonna be located.
Yeah, one quick comment, I don't have...
That would be nice, because then the neighbors would have further input into that.
They'd have an opportunity to...
So, I wouldn't mind...
Just a technical matter, if they chose to do that, and took away these, these porta-potties, which are a requirement, they're basically going in for another modification of their site plan approval. So, they would, by definition, be going back to the, the planning board. Anyway, that said, I don't have a problem adding any of these specifics.
I don't see how you could avoid going to the planning board if you're constructing a permanent facility.
But putting it into the decision doesn't hurt you.
Yeah, I don't...
The thing is, that because they're just, I mean, they're, they're just putting a small little building on the property, and there's no major site plan changes or anything like that, most likely, the building inspector could approve it, and just, you know, and do it, and they go to Board of Health.
But regardless, if we put something in there...
Otherwise, it'll go, it won't go to the planning board, it'll go to the...
Here's, here's what would come out.
Wait a minute, it will go to the, the other committee, which is the department head committee that would review by the site plan reviews, you know, which is done privately through those departments. If we do it that way, it goes publicly, and that would give the neighbors the opportunity to be involved in it.
I'd, I'd like to be able to keep the neighbors involved if something like that occurs.
And I think that would be the proper thing to do for the neighbors.
Why don't we add a provision that basically says, you know, if, if they elect to put in permanent facilities, they will have to seek approval as to the adequacy of those provisions under, under 170-10-D to the planning board.
Yes, that's very good.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think that would be the way to go with that. Are there any other further, further issues?
None.
That's what's in front of us.
No.
All right, Megan, you're gonna work on this. Do you have any questions, or would you like to take and work with Tom? If the board agrees, that you and Tom do this, and get this decision together for us, and then take and get it to me, and then we'll go forward with it from that point? The question is, Tom, for you, is that we have only so, so much time limit to do this. So, are you available to get it done properly?
Once we close a public hearing, make a decision, we still have all the normal timeframes to, to write the decision, just like any other case, right?
They're fourteen days. We have to file it with the town clerk's office. So, we need to, and the public hearing is closed, so the decision, basically, Megan, you have all the sketches on what we've said. So, did, basically, we just make a motion to approve what we wrote, and that's it, and then we get it drafted up. And that's something, if you agree that you want to do it, or Andrew, one of yous want to do it, and get it to her, and then she'll send it out to the rest of the board to approve and, and go by.
I, I have one suggestion, I don't know if this is okay, is that what you could do is, if we could get an electronic copy of the last Redline version, and then you have that, all you need to do is just accept all, except the ones which we didn't agree with.
I can work with a Word document.
Exactly.
I'm sure Sandy or Stephen can send me a Hold and Try to Copy.
Well, you have that, we have it here.
An electronic copy that we can manipulate.
Well, the thing is, to send that to Karen.
I'll get it.
We'll request it after we, we can send it. And what we'll do is to make it proper, we will have town council request it, and have it sent to Karen, and then it would go forward that way, so, all right, we'll have town council do that for us.
So, how do we vote on this?
Lee, was there any, was there anything we needed to vote on here, or...
What?
Is there anything we need to...
Yeah, we need to vote, basically, on the decision that we just did, and the three issues that were, so it's, the decision we have in front of us, plus the additional three issues that we have, that we just stated. We vote on that.
Okay.
And then, it will be drafted up by, by Megan and Paul, Tom, and then we'll take and, and go over it and approve it, and then get it filed. So, we need a motion to draft, to approve the decision that we've drafted, of the draft that we have presently.
I was gonna, Tom, do you want to take a stab at how you phrase this motion for...
Uh, yeah, I'll take a stab at it, if you want. Because I think substantively, I, I think substantive were, were, we are approving the planning board's modification of their site plan decision. That's the decision we're actually going for. At the end of the day, we're approving it, and adopting the proposed conditions that have been proposed by the parties as set forth in here, although we have some, you know, we have some modifications to it.
And our three modifications for that.
So, so let me, let me take a stab at it.
Yeah, okay.
I propose that we approve the planning board's modification of the major site plan approval decision, and adopt the proposed conditions that have, have been proposed by the parties, subject to a couple of...
Great.
...modifications. The first one is just a drafting thing, where I don't think is really part of the, part of the conditions on the waiver. That we delete, that we omit, the paragraph finding number...
Five?
They changed around. Yeah, that we omit condition number five, and in condition number nine, we add in the concept that if the Fay School elects to put in permanent facilities in the future, they, and they go before the planning board for a determin, determination of adequacy of those facilities for purposes of our bylaws, and they're found to be adequate, then the temporary facility requirements in condition nine would be superseded by that, by that decision.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Good, you can finish, you can do the rest of them, please.
That was it?
You have the other two.
What are the other two? One is just a drafting issue. So, that waiver issue isn't, isn't really, isn't really a, a, a condition that we're adopting, that's just part of the drafting, we can put in there. So, but, in, in our decision that we, that we redraft, and will include a finding that the temporary facilities that they're proposing are adequate facilities for purposes of our, of the bylaws. And that was it.
Well, we have the age limit.
No, he did that at five, that was five.
He struck five.
Struck five.
Fives was...
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you get all that, Megan?
Yeah.
Five and nine were the, were the ones that needed comment.
The other, the other thing that needs to be done, and just so you know, Paul, on this thing that they gave us, they have Dave Eagle's name on it, which is wrong, it had to be replaced by Jeff Walker.
Yeah.
All right, so we have, do we have a second on the motion?
I did second the motion, yes.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye?
Thank you all very much.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Paul?
Yes.
You know tomorrow night at seven?